Yeah, let's go ahead and get started. We're gonna start out tonight with invocation given by missionary Brandon Moreno from the Fellowship of Christian Athletes, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance, if you please stand.
Hey, good evening, everybody. My name is Brandon Moreno. I'm a local missionary with Fellowship of Christian Athletes, and I'm super excited to be here tonight. Join me in a quick word of prayer. So Jesus, thank you that you're present in this space. We just exalt you, Jesus. You are enthroned in the heavens. You are a good God. Father, we just pray that you guide our conversation, that you guide our minds, that through your spirit and through your word, you'd give us wisdom and discernment. And Father, ultimately, we just pray that the name of Jesus would be glorified in everything we do, in everything we touch, and everything we seek to do. May your name be lifted high in Kingsburg as it is in heaven. Amen.
Okay, tonight we are going to be, it's June 18th, 2025, and this is gonna be the Kingsburg City Council, City of Kingsburg Public Finance Authority and Board of Directors. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Under presentations and informational reports, we have none, so we will move on to public comment. This provides an opportunity for members of the public to address the city council on items of interest to the public within the council's jurisdiction, which are not already on the agenda tonight. It is the policy of the council not to answer these questions impromptu. Speakers should limit their comments to not more than three minutes. For items which are already on the agenda this evening, members of the public will be provided an opportunity to address the council as each item is brought up for discussion. So with that, we will open public comment. Do we have any members of the public that would like to come up to speak to something that's not on the agenda tonight? What we ask is, we ask everyone, give us state your name for the record and whether or not you're a resident in Kingsburg.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. My name is Larry Salinas. I'm the Deputy Chief of Staff for Congressman Jim Costa of the 21st Congressional District, and I am not a resident of Kingsburg. I'm here simply just to introduce myself. I've just started this job a couple of months ago, running the district operations in both the Fresno District Office and the Visalia Office in Tulare County. We're proud to have this Jubilee City of Kingsburg in our district, in the Fresno County portion of our district, and offer our services. I know a lot of folks here in town rely on support by the Congressional Office for federal services, whether it's for veterans' services or immigration services, Social Security and the like. So our office is in downtown Fresno. The number is 559-495-1620, 495-1620. And they can also go on our website at costahouse.gov. One thing, last thing I would like to mention is that as part of our efforts to represent the district, each year, each member of Congress is allowed to submit 15 community projects for funding to support projects that are important to the residents of our district. And Kingsburg submitted a funding request for your emergency operations center. We've had this process going on for the last few months with the Appropriations Committee, with a couple other relevant committees on transportation, housing, and urban development as well. And I'm delighted to let you know, if you hadn't already gotten word, that the Appropriation Committee had selected Kingsburg, this application for funding. I know the amount was requested at 2.6, I believe, 2.652 million, and they're appropriating it at 1 million on that to help assist with the creation of your operations center. I was delighted to be able to come behind one of your fire trucks this evening when I came in, truck 502, and we're delighted to be able to do that, and just wanted to provide that good news for the city.
Counsel, do you have any comments for Mr. Salinas?
Just thank you so much. Thank you, Mr. Costa.
Yeah, well, do. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, members of the council.
So I do wanna say a big thank you to Mr. Costa. You know, he's very gracious. I went back there last year, spent time with him. We were able to really sit down and kind of work on this EOC project ahead of time. He was very accommodating and very pleasant. Every time he comes through town, he reaches out, we grab lunch. He's phenomenal to Kingsburg. People may have different political views, but I think we put all that aside, and he's very much put all that aside, and he's been very good for us in Kingsburg. So please pass on our thanks for everything he does. He's always made us a priority, and we're very, very thankful for that.
Well, I appreciate that, and I shall do that, and particularly my staff that are really the top in their field on casework. So if there's anything that you guys are called upon, that you need us to help with, just don't hesitate to call, because that's our mission, is to help people in our district. That's what we wanna do.
Thank you. I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Can I mention something really quick that his office has been very helpful, and you touched on it, just so that the public that's listening knows? You mentioned immigration, and I also work in the school district, and so I have called the office, and they have had a lot of help for our citizens that are looking for help to progress their applications. So it's not specifically for applying. It's once the paperwork's done, your office can help if it stalled out, correct?
Absolutely. You're absolutely right, council member. And like I said, I think we have some of the best, if not the best, caseworkers in the valley on the congressional level and stuff, so you're in good hands. So, and I wish I could stay for the whole meeting, but I started in Selma, Visalia, and Kingsburg today, so I need to, I have two Huskies at home. I need to go check on them. Appreciate you very much. Appreciate it very much.
Do we have any other members of the public that would like to speak to anything that's not on the agenda? Guys, see none? No. Next, we will move to the consent calendar. The items on the consent calendar are considered routine and include a recommendation, a recommended action from staff, and shall be acted on in one motion of the council. If a council member requests additional information or would like to pull an item for discussion, that item shall be pulled from the consent calendar and acted upon separately. A motion to approve the consent calendar is deemed to include a motion to waive a full reading of any ordinance or resolution on the consent calendar. For this specific consent calendar, this is to be approved by city council, and this is item numbers one through seven. Do we have any items which we would like to pull on today's consent? From council? From staff or public? Okay, seeing none, we will entertain motions for consent.
Motion. Second.
All in favor? Consent passes. Thank you. Next, I believe, is it a consent item for the Board of Directors of Succession? Item eight, or is that? Okay, so we need to, we need to do that as a separate. Okay, so next we will be doing an approval of the consent item for the Board of Directors of the Successor Agency of the Kingsburg Redevelopment Agency, and that is item number eight. Would anyone like to discuss that? If not, from public, staff, or council, we will entertain motions.
Motion. Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor? Item eight passes. Next, it's gonna be another consent item, but this is gonna be for the Board of Directors for the Kingsburg Public Financing Authority. It is item number nine on tonight's agenda. We will open this up for discussion or a motion if there is no discussion.
I'll make that motion.
All in favor? Any opposed? Okay, I think we threw consent. And we will move on to the regular calendar, which is item 10. This is a public hearing for the fiscal year 2526 budget review, consideration for 2526 recommended executive budget, staff report by city manager Alex Henderson, and we will open this hearing and get the presentation from city manager.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, good evening, members of council. In accordance with City Charter 2.08.090 G, please, we're pleased to present the city manager's recommended fiscal year 2026 operating and capital improvement budget. This is our major policy document for the city for the coming year, and is based upon the strategic planning principles as adopted by council, which include preserving the Kingsburg experience, financial stability, support businesses, community engagement, and community safety. We are pleased to present the budget, which includes the Financing Authority and Redevelopment Successor Agency budgets as well. The fiscal year 26 all funds budget is $29,861,476, which is a 1.3% increase from the current year, and includes approximately 4.1 million for capital improvement projects. The fiscal year budget is balanced. The financials presented this evening are substantially equivalent to those presented to the council and public two weeks ago. Minor changes and updates to anticipated revenues and known expenditures have been incorporated. This is due to the timing of sales tax data and other jurisdictions budgets, which being finalized in the interim. For example, receiving final numbers from Measure C. The changes have been included in this version to best reflect the budget for the remainder of this fiscal year, as well as to accurately forecast fiscal year 26. The document itself includes useful information about the city's history, demographics, as well as our challenges and opportunities in the year ahead. We believe it conforms to the Government Finance Officers Association standards to be recognized as a distinguished budget and honor we have received each of the last 11 years. Personally, I would like to extend thanks to the public and city council for their input and helping create this document. We often consider requests throughout the year to help best determine needs during budget development. I do wanna give special thanks to the city's Finance Director, Alma Colado, and our entire large management team who have helped us create this budget tonight. With that, staff is recommending that the council conduct a public hearing and adopt Resolution 2025-033, approving the 2025-2026 fiscal year budget, including the Kingsburg Public Finance Authority and Successor Agency of the Kingsburg Redevelopment Agency budgets. This concludes my report, but I'm more than happy to answer any questions you may have about the document. Thank you.
I will open up for city council discussion. Or questions? So from the last presentation to this presentation, it's just, if I understand correctly, you just updated known revenues, known expenses, nothing other substantive changes?
Correct. We talked about it now. There is one change to the CFD fund balance, which was presented. Councilmember North brought it up last time, so we went back and did an audit, and there was, we received a singular check from Tulare County that included more than just CFD funds, and so that got deposited into that fund alone, so we went and made that correction, so you'll see that change in the budget. But we'll obviously go through both the lighting and landscaping budgets and the CFD budget subsequent items this evening. But other than that, no, no, what I would call significant changes have been included since our last discussion two weeks ago.
Yeah, thank you. I'll open it up for public comment. If we have any members of the public that would like to speak to the budget? Okay, seeing none, we will close public comment and bring it back for council discussion.
Just wanna say thank you to staff, Alma and Alex, and everybody who worked on this. You know, I know it takes several months, so thank you for your hard work and glad that we are ready to approve it tonight, hopefully, and that it's a good, good balanced budget. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much. I know, you know, 29, 30 million dollars basically is, it's a lot to chop up, and I think a lot of people don't realize that within these budgets, certain monies come in, and it has rules associated with just that chunk of money. And every chunk of money that comes in as a revenue from any source has rules to it. So staff doesn't just have to allocate that, they also have to determine where those rules apply, whether or not those rules have changed from last year, and then the way that they spend the money has a rule, it has a timeline. Every single thing has a bunch of rules coming in and going out, so you have to interpret a lot, Alma. I know you do. So you and your staff, thank you very, very much for the time you spent, and we appreciate it, and I appreciate the way you guys present this to council in a very easily readable document. So thank you guys for that. Do we have any other council discussion? If not, we will close today's public hearing with possible action is adopt Resolution 2025-033, approving the city of Kingsburg's 2526 fiscal year budget, including the Kingsburg Public Finance Authority and Successor Agency of the Kingsburg Redevelopment Agency budget.
I'll make that motion.
You wanna say it again?
No.
So we have a motion, we have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next is the public hearing for the Landscape and Lighting Assessment District. Consider the approval of the Engineers Report and levy collection of assessments within such district for fiscal year 2526. Staff report prepared by Finance Director Alma Colado. We will start this by opening a public hearing and presentation by Finance Director Alma Colado.
Good evening, Mayor Purcell and City Council. The Landscape and Lighting Act of 1972 authorized the cities to impose assessments and benefited properties to finance construction of street landscaping, lighting, traffic signals, parks, sidewalk repairs, recreational improvements, as well as maintenance and servicing of any of these improvements within the places, within the boundaries of the district. The engineering firm of Wellden Financial Services has prepared and filed with the clerk the engineers' report that has reviewed all the maintenance costs, administration, overhead collections, in maintaining the street landscaping and lighting district. The total levy is 116,841 for fiscal year 2526, which is $2,500 increase from the current fiscal year. A public hearing notice was published in the Business Journal on June 4th, 2025. The recommended action by city council is to conduct a public hearing to receive public testimony regarding the proposed fiscal year 2526 assessments, and to, following the hearing, take action to adopt Resolution Number 2025-034, ordering the levy and collection of assessments within the city's landscaping and lighting assessment district. This concludes my report, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. City council discussion? Questions? We will open for public comment. Seeing none, we will close the public comment and bring it back for continued city council discussion. Any final questions or comments?
I have one question. Alma, when you say you had the public hearing, or the public hearing notice went out, did anyone from the public participate, or was that just?
Not that I'm aware. It's just the notice.
Okay. So it seemed no public, okay. Understood. Thank you. Nothing further.
Any other questions? If not, we will close the public hearing. Our possible actions are to adopt Resolution 2025-034, approving the city of Kingsburg 2526 fiscal year budget, including the Kingsburg Public Finance Authority and Successor Agency of the Kingsburg Redevelopment Agency budget. Now, that's incorrect. Okay. Is this the fiscal year? Okay, I see. It's different on the printed one. Is the correct recommended action following the hearing to adopt Resolution 2534, ordering the levy and collection of assessments? Okay, so the possible, possible action then is adopt 2025-034, ordering the levy and collection of assessments within the city's landscaping and lighting assessments district?
Correct.
We'll entertain motions.
Make the motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next, we will move on to item 12, the GAN limit adoption for 2526 fiscal year budget figures, staff report prepared by Finance Director Alma Colado.
Mayor Purcell and council members, tonight's item is an annual process where the city council must approve a resolution to adopt the 2025-26 GAN limit for the city. For the new fiscal year budget figures, using the county growth percentage of .69 or the city growth percentage of .90 for the spending limit calculation for fiscal year 2526, the staff recommends that the city council adopt Resolution 2025-035, approving the GAN limit calculation for the new fiscal year using the city growth percentage. By using the city growth percentage, the city is below the limit for the 2526 fiscal year budget by 6.5 million. And this concludes my report. Happy to answer any questions.
Council discussion or questions? Any public comment? Specifically related to this? Okay, seeing none, we'll bring it back for council discussion. If not, the recommendation from staff is to adopt Resolution 2025-035, approving the GAN limit calculation for 2526 fiscal year using the city growth percentage, and we'll entertain motions.
I'll make that motion. Second.
All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Next up, we have the Community Facilities District, 201701 fiscal year 2526 levy, staff report prepared by City Manager Alex Henderson.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, if you recall, on June 7th, 2017, the city council adopted Resolution 2017-023, entitled Resolution of Formation of Kingsburg Community Facilities District Number 2017-01, which is a public service district, ordering the formation of the CFD, authorizing the levy of a special tax on property within the CFD, and establishing appropriations limit for the community facilities districts, all pursuant to the Melrose Community Facilities Act of 1982, constituting California Government Code, Chapter 2.5 of Part 1 of Division 2 of Title V, commencing with Section 53311, Melrose Act. Public services that will be financed by the CFD levy include, without limitation, police services, fire and ambulance and emergency response services, parks and open space maintenance, lighting, landscape maintenance, alley maintenance and repair, administrative fees for the city, and reimbursement of costs related to the formation of the district. So these are CFDs, just to give some background, you know, very similar to landscape and lighting, except for they can cover more services than landscaping lighting. Obviously, landscaping lighting, very specific to what you hear in the title, whereas these can go to cover costs like police and fire that become much more common in, you know, California communities, because often property taxes for houses do not keep up with wages and other costs associated with maintaining those areas. One of the main reasons that the council in 2017, with new housing coming on online, then discussed using CFDs as well, is because of the use of alleys. Council had a significant amount of conversation at that time about whether to continue to keep alleys as a standard for new development, because all of our former development had alleys, but not a mechanism to pay for them. So we've kinda talked about this before, where we're not, you know, technically allowed to use dollars that are meant for roads for alleys, because they don't count as lane miles. So that's one of the main reasons for adopting CFDs, but then also to make sure that new development, you know, would pay its way and would not be a strain on city resources as it related to police, fire, and other services as well. So this evening, you know, you have, again, we have, we have a couple of zones as part of our jurisdiction. We have tax zone number one, which deals with the majority of our Fresno County housing, and then we have tax zone number two, which is associated with the Summerlin Project and covers 17 houses in that development. We've also included information, just so you see it in here this evening, that shows what Tulare County will be adopting and then remitting to the city as well. So that's the majority of the other 144 houses that are in the Summerlin Project. But because they are the taxing jurisdiction, they're the ones that are required to collect those funds, and then they remit them to the city. So our recommendation this evening is to go back here quickly. So get it right, is to adopt Resolution 2025-036, a resolution of the city, county, and the city of Kingsburg acting in its capacity as a legislative body of the Community Facilities District, authorizing the levy of a special tax for fiscal year 2025-2026, and authorize the city manager to execute the intent to levy letter, which will be given to Fresno County and then added to the tax rule for all eligible properties. So I'm very happy to answer any questions. Sorry, as I mentioned earlier, the Summerlin fund balance has been changed to reflect the actual, the actual CFD revenues as opposed to what was presented two weeks ago. So it was, the fund balance itself has decreased just over $100,000 because of the check that was received that included multiple, multiple types of revenue sources from Tulare County. So we regret that oversight, but appreciate Councilmember North for bringing that to our attention. So I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have, and that concludes my report.
Thank you. Council discussion? Questions?
I have a question. So if I'm reading this right, there's no increase from last year to this year?
No, so there's, there is a levy amount.
The 831 and the 1688 is the same?
No, the 831 and the 1688 is the amount for, that we're, for this year. It's a, I believe, a 4% increase from the previous year.
I have a hard time doing an increase when we still have a lot of funds in there, so for both, both zones. But the Summerlin, so there's still like 400,000 in that fund? If I remember, there was like 500?
Yeah, that's just shy of 500,000. That will be a fund balance.
In comparison to the others, that's still significant. That hasn't been used?
Correct. So if we talked a little bit about last time, you know, we, there's a percentage of dollars every year that goes towards services for the year. If you look on page, sorry, if you go to page 342, the PDF, scroll down, and roughly an estimated budget there, so you'll see sort of annual costs, and then there are portions that will go into essentially sinking funds. So about, if you look in the middle there, you'll see 46, roughly $46,000 that will go towards streets, alleys, and you know, lighting costs, so some of those lighting costs will be each year. But for example, when we have to go redo a road or redo an alley or something like that, that's where we would be using fund balance down the line. So not, those dollars are not going to get spent. Every single year, we wouldn't, we wouldn't drain that account, because at some point, we're gonna have to do large capital projects related to roads and alleys. And so what's difficult to know is, is what, you know, in, what those total costs will be at that time. So it is a decision for the council to decide each year. I know in years past, we've talked about trying to have some incremental amount specifically so that you know, we don't fall behind, like we've done with some of our other bonds, right, where we, we haven't had increases each year, and then all this, you know, we're in a difficult spot when the time comes to, to raise those amounts, but it, this is entirely at the pleasure of the council.
Specifically at Summerlin, with the amount that we still have in the account, we're gonna continue to accumulate, and it's fairly new. So in my opinion, we shouldn't be raising now. I don't know, it's a hard pill to swallow when we have a lot in there right now, especially in comparison to the other one. the other one.
I think that that's, that's a very valid point. My only concern with not doing the same across the board, um, is that we are parsing that out separately, and we just don't know what's going to come with that. This is really for me, I don't think it takes very much money, although that seems like a lot of money. I don't think that it takes very many roads getting redone to eat that money up. And what I don't want to be is, I don't want to be in a place to where we do need that money, we eat that up, and in the next year, we have to come to that specific district that's already paying a higher amount, and then throw even more on top of that. That's my biggest concern with that, is if we're not consistent, and I understand that we're getting a fund balance because it's new, but I have a feeling because that was all built out at the same time, we're going to get hit with huge costs all at once down the future, and if we don't kind of incrementally keep putting the same amount in, we're going to eat it all up, and then they're going to have nothing. I just think that money goes quicker than we think, and that's, that's why I'm like concerned with that.
Can understand that, but we're already charging, um, double of the other houses, and so our fund is bigger over there.
The council discussion? If not, we can open it up to public comment. Seeing none, we can bring it back to council discussion? The recommended action is a motion to adopt twenty twenty five zero thirty six, uh, Resolution of the City Council of City Kingsburg acting in its capacity as a legislative body of Community Facilities District Number twenty seventeen dash one, uh, authorizing the levy of a special tax for fiscal year twenty five twenty six, and authorize the City Manager to execute the intent to levy letter. Is that correct? We'll entertain motions.
Make that motion? Second.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed?
No.
Thank you, motion carries. Next, under future agenda items, uh, we have none listed, and so we will have a City Manager's report.
Uh, just a couple of brief reminders, uh, there, we have our traditionally go dark, the first meeting in July, so the July second, uh, City Council meeting is canceled, so our next, uh, regular meeting will be July sixteenth. Uh, and then, uh, obviously just, uh, getting ready for the July third, uh, fireworks celebration, so, um, Adam has been working closely with the Sea Wolves Group, and I know Daniel, uh, and Adam are going to do a walkthrough with them next week, and so, um, I've been pretty good about their, the plan that they have in place, and just would encourage folks to come down and uh, visit the bowl, and all the proceeds will go to help, uh, a local program and, uh, a future years, uh, celebrations, so that's all I have.
Thank you. Uh, council, we have council member reports and council committee reports, uh, starting with Councilmember Silva.
Thank you. Um, Economic Development Committee has not met, although just a few little updates around town, um, Quick Corner Construction is, uh, continuing um, with the gas station, it was thought that Gulf Franchise would be a part of that project, but it looks like that they will not, they will not be part of that project, so um, city staff will work with the owners and the contractors to make sure that the Swedish motif and design is, you know, is, um, up to the city standards there, so that's one thing. And then, um, in addition, if you've noticed, uh, the business park sign has, uh, been refurbished, and there's several panels up there now, Cheyenne's, um, Valley Health Team and T-Mobile waiting on one more panel to, um, be completed, but that sign looks really amazing, and now there's business, business advertisement there, which is long time overdue and, and coming, so I'm super excited about that. And then, um, there's been a few, so economic development, there's been, uh, a Facebook post out there that I've had quite a few residents talk to me about, about a Korean, a Korean corn dog, uh, business coming to town, so I don't know if you guys have, um, had, uh, residents talk to you about that, but as of right now, the city hasn't been approached by anybody, but that's not to say that there couldn't be something working with some of the gas stations or something of that nature, so I think that, that'd be interesting, but we'll see how that develops, if it develops at all. Uh, moving on to, uh, the South, the, the South Kings GSA, we have not met, um, nor has the San Joaquin Valley Air Pollution Control. Um, but I did attend the Kingsburg Healthcare District meeting, the Kingsburg Girls Softball League, um, went for some community, um, uh, funding needs, and so they were looking for, um, ten thousand dollars to help them with all of their tournaments and, um, the things that they are, uh, going to attend, and so the healthcare district, um, approved that community needs funding, uh, request. And then the other was, uh, Valley Health Team asked for some funds for advertise, well, they asked for some funds for the, the sign panels. Um, that, it's interesting because Kingsburg Healthcare District already has a, um, MOU with them, so what they agreed to do was go back and adjust the MOU to account for that as part of the advertising that they are already allocating towards Kings, uh, towards Valley Health Team. And so they're just going to reconfigure them, their MOU to include that as the advertisement, so, um, that hasn't been approved, but they were in process doing that, so, um, other than that, that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Councilmember North?
I don't have anything to report out on tonight.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes, the, um, Finance Committee hasn't met, our next meeting is July twenty eighth. Um, the Community Services Commission also hasn't met, our next meeting is June twenty fifth, and then, um, the only other thing I have to mention is that last night I attended the, um, Chamber Mixer at Jensen Enterprises, and it was, it was very nice, it was nice to get a tour of the place, it's a beautiful facility and, um, nice to have them here in, in our local area.
Thank you. Mayor Broton?
State Department Committee, we are scheduled to meet in August. Planning Commission, next meeting will be, uh, July tenth. And we met Thursday with, I met Thursday with the Board of S K F, uh, we held the public hearing, uh, on protest and confirm the protest, uh, reported the sewer service charges, so we opened that public hearing, and then, uh, we, uh, we adopted a resolution overruling protest and confirming report on sewer service charges. And then we also approved a resolution on certifying the, certifying the County of Tulare to place direct charges in the secured tax rule for fiscal year twenty twenty five, twenty six, and that's over in Summerlin. And then we also approved an amendment, uh, to consulting service agreement with MKN and Associates, uh, for the thousand dollars. All I have.
Thank you. Uh, for cog and rural transit, we have not met, I think we meet in a couple of weeks, the end of the month. Um, other than that, the only thing, as mentioned by Congressman Costa's office, um, we, we have earmarks on the federal budget, which are going to be huge for our city. Uh, it doesn't mean that we have it yet, but we're further along in the process for that million dollars than we have been in the past, so things are looking very positive for that, so I'm thankful for that. Other than that, I have nothing else. Is there any other items from staff or council before we adjourn? Okay, we will adjourn tonight's meeting.